What do you do?
Um, recycling.
I like recycling.
Recycling?
They don't really do that. Yeah, they just throw the whole.
It might, it might get.
Not sure.
I feel like my.
I, I.
If, if Mewonzi are so recycling heavy and adjustment together, that's a problem.
Yeah. We want, we want to talk, we'd like to.
Why do you think you should?
That's all right.
Like.
I don't think that's, I don't think that's in our jurisdiction. I don't think we're allowed.
Maybe.
Okay, good evening. It is now seven oh one and I'm reconvening to open session and calling to order the regular Board of Education meeting for Indian Prairie School District two oh four on Monday, September ninth, twenty twenty four. Michelle, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Donahue.
Here.
Ms. Jane.
Here.
Ms. Gents.
Here.
And Mr. Carubus.
Here.
We have a quorum. Ms. Jane, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have one board salute tonight. Mr. Carubus.
District two oh four students participate in summer springboard program. The board salutes twenty eight district two oh four students who participated in an introduction to healthcare springboard series summer course. A collaboration with Endeavor Health, College of DuPage, IPSD, and Naperville two oh three, which included young mental health first aid training and visits to key healthcare facilities. Additionally, a trades and construction program was piloted with four students gaining experience thanks to support from Bosch Community Fund, Nycor Gas, Bullion Andrews, and other partners. We extend our thanks to Nina Menace, CEO and Executive Director of Kids Matters for her dedication in making these experiences possible to our, for our students. Congratulations to all involved.
Thank you. Let's give an applause for that. We now have our student representative report by Soha Pancho from Matia Valley High School. Welcome.
Good evening, everyone. I am Soha Pancho and I'm the new board, executive board representative for Matia Valley High School, and it is my pleasure to be here with you all today. First, I would like to start off with general updates. The homecoming theme of twenty twenty four will be an evening in Paris on October twelfth. Senior sunrise on August twenty third went great. It had beautiful weather and several hundred students showed up at six AM to enjoy the sunrise together. Matia welcomed over sixty transfer students at the start of the year and we hosted both a transfer student orientation and a freshman orientation to welcome all of our new students. Next, I would like to move on to athletics. Girls tennis won their first tournament, which was held at Plainfield North on opening weekend. Matia Valley won their first game after a very long time. Go Mustangs. Athletics is well underway. We have roughly six hundred student athletes involved in sports this fall. Summer camps ran smoothly and the transition into the fall season has been seamless. Mustang Mania was a huge success. On Friday, August twenty third, the MV Athletic Department and boosters did an outstanding job organizing the event. Lastly, I would like to move on to fine arts. The marching Mustangs had a great start to the new school year. The students performed at Mustang Mania and represented two oh four in the Naperville Lastfling Parade on Labor Day. Over four hundred Matia Valley art students and staff came together to start the school year off with a collaborative art project. The Positive Panels Project had each student individual, each student design individual pieces based on an inspirational or motivational quote, and then collaborate to install their piece on a freestanding bamboo and chicken wire panels in the courtyard. Having the students intermix with each other classes and work together on the finished project. Work based on positivity was a great way to start off the twenty twenty four to twenty twenty five school year. Please feel free to stop by Matia Valley and see the finished project. Thank you all for your time and I look forward to seeing you all, filling you all in on the great things at Matia Valley and its future. And as always, go go Mustangs.
Thank you. Do you want to announce? Yeah.
So tonight we are in, starting a new process or program in our, our Board of Ed meeting and it is our spotlight on a school. Our schools do wonderful things and what we want to do is able to spotlight some of the great things that they are doing across our district. So at each board meeting, a school will have no more than five minutes to spotlight an event that's taking place or happening in their school. And tonight, to start us off, is Brookdale Elementary School.
So welcome to Ms. Keely Schmidt and Jenny Wegerson.
Good evening, Dr. Tally and members of the board. My name is Keely Schmidt and I'm the proud principal at Brookdale Elementary School, and we are very excited to kick off the school spotlight for this new segment. And I am joined by one of my rock star, what I call our dream team members, and one that is continuously in the trenches, really doing the hard work every day. And that is Mrs. Jenny Wegerson, and she is one of our third grade teachers.
Hi, I'm Jenny Wegerson. I've been at Brookdale for eighteen years now. That's the only school I've ever taught at. I taught third grade for, I lost count, but I also taught second grade and first grade, so total of eighteen years.
And as you can imagine, trying to pick out something to spotlight and all the different things that happen throughout our days and our years is really difficult. So we really thought about our school improvement plan, which we know was one that we brought in front of the board. And one of the school improvement plan goals is attendance. And thinking about, we can't do the magic work that we do in our schools if they're not there. And when we looked at our attendance and really drilled down at Brookdale, not only were there some correlation between attendance and some of our students, but also the fact that they weren't coming to school on time. And just like adults, when we start our day off not on time or we're walking in late to a meeting, it throws off our day. And we tell our parents the same thing happens to our students. When they aren't there to start their day, their day is thrown off too. And many times in our classrooms, the things they're going over are, is the schedule for the day. They're having morning meetings. And so for a student walking in and have missed some of that, they're really missing that kickoff to the day. So we did some action research and we pulled the data of what is the grade level that's having the most tardies. And at the time, last year at our sched, for our schedule, it was our social emotional learning time. And so again, for our students that are coming in late, what is a crucial component of instruction that they're missing? SEL. That's where our students are feeling connected to the learning. And so we found that it was third grade that had the most data of tardies. So I went to the third grade team and just, they were absolutely like, let's do it, let's look at it, let's kick this off. And so the action research then led to implementation this year at grades two through five, kicking their day off with what we call soft start.
So soft starts are really just designed for students to come to school and get a nice smooth transition to their day. Students start, they come to school and they play with engaging activities, they collaborate with each other, and really work as a team just to, just initiate the school day and bring a positive nurturing environment to, to the day. Typically, we would start off with morning meeting or we would have an activity for the kids to do, but like Keely said, they were really missing that. And we found that we would really wanted to get the kids excited and motivated to get to school on time and be present. And what better way than to just play? So the way it works is students choose their activity today that they will do tomorrow. So for example, my class today chose their soft start activity for tomorrow, so now they're all excited about what they're gonna do. And then at the end of the day, we choose again for the next day. We kind of explained it to the students, but if you get to school at eight fifty, which is our first bell, then you do your morning jobs, you know, order your lunch, unpack your backpack, all the things that should take you approximately five minutes or so. So they could potentially have from eight fifty-five until nine twenty just to play, which is about twenty-five minutes. We also showed them that if you get to school closer to that second bell, nine oh five, you really only might get fifteen minutes to play. And either way, no matter what time you get to school, we're cleaning up at nine twenty AM. So we really wanted to get the kids to be on time so that they did not miss their soft start time, which they were really bummed out about if they did.
One of the pieces that we looked at was what are the materials that students are engaging with and how do we keep it exciting? When we do indoor recess at the elementary level, we didn't want it to be the same materials. Because if it's the same materials, it's like, well, I can, if I miss playtime or soft start, I can just get it if we have indoor recess time. So it was an investment of looking at what do students most engage with, what's gonna intellectually engage them, but also what are collaborative activities that they can do with one another to really build on that social emotional learning?
This is just a mock example of a schedule that I have and you could see some of the activities that the students are able to choose. Every day I'll rotate the schedule, so it's not always the same activities. Some activities stay pretty consistent. And then we change them out and the students just, we drag their name over to the side and that's quickly how they choose for the next day. This is just some student feedback. In order for us to really know if this was working for our students, we wanted to survey them and see what they really liked or if there was any concerns they had about it, but really, these were all student testimony. They loved it. Just one example I really love is, I liked that we get to play a little bit before starting class instead of just hopping right into learning. I really like our soft starts and wish we could get to do it in every grade. And just, you know, it's so, we get our sillies out, it's just so fun. We get to work with new friends. It was just all, these are all student, student words and we just really loved hearing that. This is just some students in action. This was in my class last year, just playing some of the activities that we had designed. As you can see, they're all actively engaged and this, you could see this right now happening in my classroom every morning.
And so, of course, we love a good video that really brings it to life. And so, everything works as it should. And that was our students when we kicked it off last year and really sold the idea of soft start to them. And now it is implemented at Brookdale Elementary School in grades two through five, and it's how they start every single day. They start it in play. Thank you very much for your time. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, it is now time for public comment and sixty, sixty minutes is allowed. Each person is limited to three minutes. When addressing the board, we ask that you respect the confidentiality and safety of our students and school district personnel. We also ask that those addressing the board be cognizant that this is an open meeting and is available to all age groups. And as such, ask that you consider who the audience members are this evening and keep comments age appropriate. Public comment represents the voice and opinion of the speaker. There will be no feedback from the board members during the meeting, but follow-up will be provided by an administrator as appropriate. Although this is not required, it is helpful for the board to know whether the comments and concerns we hear are being raised by residents. So we ask that you state if you live in the district and if you currently have children in our schools. We have four speakers tonight. The first speaker is Eric Haven, Havenja.
Hi, my name is Eric Havenja. My wife and I bought our home here in District two oh four twelve years ago. And we're so proud to tell our friends, we said we moved to Aurora, but it's District two oh four. We were excited. We didn't have any kids yet. My son's back there now. Say hi, Josiah. He's going into third grade and he's had some amazing teachers in his time here, so I want to give a shout out to his preschool teacher, Ms. Cabrera. He used to be downstairs here in the ladybug room. She's retired now, but then he moved on to Georgetown. He had a great teacher in kindergarten, Mrs. Madaz. She taught him how to read in English. Mrs. Cabrera in preschool taught him Spanish. So reading in Spanish in preschool, great teachers, be able to support that for him. In kindergarten, they added another language, so he's reading both languages now. In first grade, Mrs. Johns, he read the Harry Potter series as a first grader. His teacher supporting him the whole way, getting Spanish support through that in the developmental bilingual program. So it's really sad for me to hear that you guys are canceling this program. The students who have been in this program, my son, kindergarten, first, and second grade, you have that base, you're building that. It's a program that was scheduled for ninety percent Spanish, eighty percent scaling it back then to fifty, and now you just pulled the rug out in third grade. And I've, I've met with the principal, I've met with Rafael Sagarra. Still don't have any research base that supports that decision of pulling it out in the middle of that. Why you would not continue that until the, the completion of the program? So do you want to fifty fifty through the fifth grade there? I, I would love for somebody else to explain that to me. So that's part of the issue. He did meet with us in Rafael, met with us in the spring of last year. And I have the letter here where he stated they would continue to receive, that's okay, I got one minute yet. Where he would consider to receive support in their native instruction of Spanish, and in addition, it would be some ESL pullout time. That's what, what he was written in the letter, what he expressed in spring of last year. Unfortunately, that is not happening and it is only English instruction. So in the middle of their pro, of their education, they're just getting this solid base and now they're pulling that away. So I'm, I'm really confused, disappointed in that specific decision to no longer continue with the group and finish it out. I understand the numbers are changing, there's different philosophies. Don't agree with those philosophies either, but if you don't want to start in kindergarten, that would be fine. But the ones who are in it to pull it out is doing a disservice to those students. And I would just wonder why we are canceling the program when if you go five minutes in either direction, two oh three, three oh eight, one thirty-one, everyone is expanding their dual language programs. And two oh four, I, like I said, I used to be so proud to say we were on the cutting edge. It's a great school. How are these other schools and districts right around us in our community passing us up? That's my three minutes, I'm sorry.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Jeanette Gallagher.
Good evening. My name is Jeanette Gallagher and I actually have grandchildren here in District two oh four. And I'm here with a friend from Amazing Grace Ministries. We're a group of parents and grandparents who stand against human trafficking. We've held peaceful human trafficking awareness walks, not to be confused with protests. Our walks are peaceful. They're done solemnly and quietly with no talking because the victims of trafficking have no voice, no freedom of speech, no choice. Any one of us could walk right past a victim and not know they were being trafficked. We have been, we've had human awareness walks in Plainfield, Lyle, and in Naperville just a few weeks ago. We plan on doing one in Aurora in next spring. We have had an overwhelming response and support from the communities. Parents are concerned for their children's safety. Statistics say there are approximately three hundred, three hundred thousand children being trafficked. If you see your first page in your packet, you can see the, the statistics for yourself. We are here tonight to ask you to partner and support us on Friday, September twenty seventh at six thirty as we are having a free cyber safety educational speaker, Kim Smith, an ambassador of Shared Hope International, to come address and share with parents and students alike about how predators use the internet to entice our youth. Some of the topics will include, one, the importance of keeping private information private, not allowing strangers on sites, both social and gaming. Two, how to organize or recognize online predators and in-person exploitation and sexual exploitation. Three, sexting, the consequences of sending and receiving nude pictures. Four, how to set boundaries and what to do if someone is asking inappropriate questions. Five, sexting and its connection to the increase of teens on the side, which breaks my heart. Do you know or have heard of these sites called doxing or squatting? I didn't until being educated. The word doxing, squatting, squatting seems innocent enough, don't they? See the paper in your packet for what these sites truly are for yourself. Some of our youths might be on these sites. As parents, grandparents, or guardians, we need to be educated and be aware of all the sites that our youth can go, get on. These sites are dangerous and predators are just lurking for their next victim. New sites are popping up on the internet all the time, so we need to keep up with what is out there and educate our children. The state of Illinois just signed a human trafficking bill into law. It is to support survivors of human trafficking through the recovery process as they seek to put their lives back together. See the bill in that packet. So you see trafficking is happening here in Illinois and it's happening in our backyards. And enclosed in that packet are examples of those caught and arrested here. Also in the packet are bios and credentials, Kim Smith, our speaker, Dr. Joyce Low, our founder and visionary of Amazing Grace Ministries. We also have in our Amazing Grace Ministry team, members affiliated with the government. Mike Zen, who works for Call to Rescue, dustings and rescue survivors from all over the United States. We also have an investigative support analyst, Gary Erickson, who works with the US Postal Inspection Service on the DOJ fraud team in the Criminal Investigation Service Center in Chicago. See his complete bio in the packet.
Ms. Donahue, the speaker's time has ended.
I'm sorry.
Thank you very much.
This is what we'd like you to get out on the district site, please.
Okay, thank you. The next speaker is Alberto Hernandez Villa.
Good afternoon. I apologize for the board for my dressing. Unfortunately, I'm a parent, so unfortunately, don't have a lot of time. I'm here because I'm also part of one of the parents to support about the bilingual program that was actually pulled off from Georgetown. As you can see, I'm not the only one, Father. There's a lot of parents. Can you please stand up? All these parents are here because we are actually here to make sure that do not pull out the program from bilingual program from Georgetown. My kids were there for the last two mo, uh, years and they actually are more than I was supposed to. I came from actually buying a house in Aurora because I came from, from Aurora, Illinois, where a dual language program. And I thought coming to Aurora had the same each program as well and I found out it wasn't. When I ended, ended up hearing that they were going to a bilingual program, I say, well, at least they're gonna learn our language, English and Spanish. We're in the new world now that unfortunately now we have to learn two languages. I respected my kids to learn that, not just because of my culture, but because we're looking in the United States that we actually now we need to speak not just one or two, but three. So I was hoping to see here, to understand that we as parents, that we are looking to see if, to see if you actually continue with the program. Don't let, stop us from moving from Naperville two thousand, District two thousand and four, to look for other options for our kids. I know I don't have this presentation, but I wish I will. And next time when I come back, I will give you more effort and everything because as a parent, I don't have much of a time, as you guys do, a lot of you see. But hopefully you can understand and hear our voices that we want our program back. We want our kids to learn English and our language as well. And I'm assuming that there's other countries that they would like to do the same thing. Hopefully they can understand that. Thank you. My name is Alberto and thank you for letting me to hear my voice.
Thank you. The last speaker is Alicia Smith.
Hello, my name is Alicia Smith. I'm a former student in the district, Gregory Wabonzi, a former teacher at Gregory, I'm, sorry. Former student Gregory Wabonzi, former teacher Georgetown and Kendall. I live in the district. Gomberg neighborhoods and my niece and nephew attend Gomberg school. Indian Prairie School District two oh four is not being forthright with the community about their transportation update while still asking the community to vote for the referendum. Indian Prairie School District two oh four had removed busing eligibility from many neighborhoods over the last few years and intend to remove more busing over the next several years. They have removed busing from the Gomberg neighborhoods, White Eagle, Eagle Point, Stonebridge, and now Ashbury. Next, the Wabonzi neighborhoods that are less than one point five miles from Wabonzi will be looked at, as well as Gregory, which includes Ashbury again and Breckenridge. But the district will not let these neighborhoods know if they are losing their busing eligibility until spring break. So the district is passing or would like to pass a referendum that they say is based on safety, but they are not letting neighborhoods know if they are losing their busing until after the vote. The Georgetown neighborhood has never had their I dot serious safety hazard rating completed on their walk to Wabonzi. Yet the district would like them to vote for a safety referendum, even though they have the most dangerous walk to school. The district buried their transportation update in the board docs of the September eleventh, twenty twenty-three school board meeting. When the district wants to educate the community, they make sure they communicate with the community. They communicated with the community about the boundary changes. They communicated with the community about the referendum. They did not communicate with the community about the transportation update until communities lost their busing eligibility. When the district wants to assess safety of all its buildings, they make sure to get it done. When they changed the boundaries, they made sure they assessed the demographics and populations of all the schools. When they wanted to assess the safety and needs of the buildings for the referendum, they did so for all the buildings. But for the I dot serious safety hazard reports, they state that they do not have the time to complete them and have to spread it out over several years. The community deserves to know about the transportation changes. Before we vote for a referendum, we deserve to know if we are going to lose our busing eligibility. Thank you.
Thank you. We now move to our consent agenda and superintendent report. We will start with the superintendent report, Dr. Tally.
Thank you, Ms. Donahue, members of the Board of Education and the Indian Prairie community. Thanks to the Indian Prairie Education Foundation, IPEF, our biannual Young Hearts for Life cardiac screenings are happening this year. This screening is open to all of our high school students. The screening is free. On September fifth, the screenings were completed at Nikla Valley Main Campus. On September twelfth, the screenings will be held at Nikla Valley Freshman Center. On September twenty-fourth, the screenings will be at Wabonzi Valley. And finally, on February fourth, screenings will be held at Matia. If you're interested in volunteering to help, please go to the IPEF website. The cost of the program that IPEF pays is approximately sixty thousand dollars. We thank IPEF for putting money towards this program every two years. This program is a prime example of how your donations to IPEF go directly to support our students. I want to clarify some misinformation that was shared. It's part of public comment at the last Board of Ed meeting regarding the referendum that will be on the ballot. I'm only sharing factual information. The referendum is a bond referendum that allows the district to spend funds on capital improvements only. These building improvements include safety and security and infrastructure. Funds may not be used to hire additional staff, salaries, or anything that falls within our operation budget. We are planning to hold town hall meetings and information about where and when these meetings will happen may be found on our website. Today marks the twelfth day of school. We had a wonderful opening of school this year. From day one, I started my visits at Brookdale to, to visit all of our schools. Staff said in many of the schools how it felt like they had been in school for weeks. Students quickly readjusted to the school schedules. Staff quickly worked on establishing positive relations with students. Transportation was running at ninety-two percent on time rating during the first week. All construction that was supposed to be completed was completed by the start of the school year. Food services had meals in place for students to eat. And there are many different parts to getting the school ready for the start of the school year, and I'm happy to say that things were working like clockwork. I do want to recognize Mr. Ron Johnson, Director of Support Services. He had been highlighted in the latest issue of School Transportation News. This national organization highlighted the work that was done by our transportation in using the district's technology during a nearby shooting incident that happened last year. The technology allowed for the ability to reroute buses quickly and efficiently when roads and neighborhoods were closed due to a shooting event in the community. I'm very glad that Ron Johnson and Ms. Alicia Clayton, Transportation Coordinator, were highlighted in our magazine for their exemplary work. This is the second time that our district transportation team has been not mentioned in the magazine. Finally, the U.S. observes National Hispanic Heritage Month from September fifteenth to October fifteenth by celebrating the histories, cultures, and contributions of individuals whose ancestors came from Mexico, the Caribbean, Central and South America, and Spain. Our schools in their own way will be celebrating this month and spotlighting the contributions made by those with the Hispanic heritage. I'll now turn the meeting back to Ms. Donahue.
Just also for clarity, Dr. Tally, the bond, when you are discussing that it is for capital expenses, that does not include transportation costs. It's in the operating budget.
That is exactly right. Yes, because that would be salaries for bus drivers and everything related to that, operations.
And the ninety-two percent start rate for on-time buses is the best we've ever had.
Best we've had in years. That is exactly right.
All right, now we move to the consent agenda. I need approval for consent agenda items D through J.
I move to approve consent agenda items D through J.
Second.
Any discussion? Michelle, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Jane.
Yes.
Ms. Gents.
Yes.
Mr. Carubus.
Yes.
And Ms. Donahue.
And Ms. Donahue.
Yes. The motion passes. Next, we move to our action items. I need a motion to affirm the decision on the Uniform Grievance Procedure Complaint filed by the parent identified enclosed session.
I move that the Board of Education affirm the decision on the Uniform Grievance Procedure Complaint filed by the parent identified enclosed session.
I second.
Any discussion? Michelle, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Gins.
Yes.
Ms. Jane.
Yes.
Ms. Donahue.
Yes.
And Mr. Carubus.
Yes.
The motion passes. We will now have a presentation from Mr. John Robinson regarding the 2024-2025 Building Operations Update.
Matt's up there, too.
Good evening, board members. As mentioned, John, our Director of Building Operations is with me this evening as we update the board on our building operations, capital program, specifically the work we did in the summer of 2024, and what we're proposing for the summer of 2025. Tonight's policy is in line with Board Policy 4-150. And just a reminder that we believe tonight's presentation aligns with all four areas of our strategic plan. We serve over 26,000 students in our building each day, 3,000 staff members, and as we'll mention a little bit, building rentals and involving the community in our buildings is a major consideration as we look at our building program as well. So we do believe it hits on all four strategic plan priority areas. Tonight, we'll provide a quick operation, an overview of our operations. We'll talk about the summer of 2024 projects recently completed. We will share what we are proposing for the summer of 2025, and we do have kind of two proposals this evening contingent on the referendum that is being put to our taxpayers and our voters in November. And then finally, we will close with time for any questions from the board.
So thanks for having us. This is always a fun time for me. I get to talk about all the great things we did this last summer, and thanks to the board for supporting it financially. In taking care of the buildings, we have 36 facilities, over 4 million square feet. We take care of 650-plus acres of property. Like Matt said, the students and staff total nearly 3,000. We do that with 218 employees, custodial grounds, maintenance, HVAC. They're all Airmark staff. There are a couple district employees, myself and a couple of project managers, that do all the work. So we do that in-house. The budget that I'm given is about $30 million in operating budget for the year, and we spent for this coming year about, we're going to spend about 11 million bucks in capital. Another big part of the district's operations is our rental program. We have nearly 13,000 rentals a year. That's quite a bit, and that generates approximately $1 million in rental income. So '24, what did we do? Well, we did nearly $20 million worth of work, and that encompassed paving, roofing, masonry, a chiller, a lot of flooring, a new camera system, and some playgrounds. In addition to those major projects, we did upgrade some more intercom systems. We replaced about 14 exterior doors, fire alarm projects in two buildings, two pilot classrooms, and we'll get to that a little bit later, a pilot LMC, a storage shed. But the beauty of it is we got all of this done on budget and on time. And I think it's important just to mention that the reason why we were able to get that done on budget and on time is that we start early. We don't wait till January to start these design projects and getting the board involved and getting you to understand what we're trying to do and why. The staff is great. We, you know, a lot of these projects, the staff, the principal, the teachers, the custodians, the work they have to do before we even get the bids in to make sure that the contractors can get in and do their work on time is very important. So let's talk about some of the specific projects. So we did paving projects at nine locations. That could mean either asphalt work or concrete work and sidewalks. So we did these nine buildings. I just wanted to show you a couple pictures. Really nice. We did four additional playgrounds at Gomber, Georgetown, McCarty, and Graham. In addition at Graham, we have a preschool program there, and if you see on the bottom left, that's a second playground we put into Graham just for the preschool. One of the things I love about the playgrounds is that we take the playgrounds out and redo the whole thing from bottom up. So we added drainage, so there's no more frozen playgrounds in the wintertime like we've had in the past year, so the kids can stay on them all year round. The mulch is put in at the proper depth, so they're safe. It's easy for us to maintain once they're at the right depth. And probably the most fun part, and Matt and I get to be a part of this, is we get the community and the school involved. In a lot of these projects that we've mentioned, I will put them together with an architect, and I will show the principal, this is what we're going to do. We don't do that here. We tell them this is what we'd like to put a new playground in. We know the parameters of the dollars we're going to spend. We give them the opportunity to pick the pieces they want. They survey their community. They survey the students. They survey the parents. What's important to them and their community is the swings, is it climbing pieces, and they pick out the colors, and these are 100% their playgrounds. They're not mine. They just write the check. Flooring has been a big project the last few years. We did flooring at six schools, and then we also did additional six gyms and NPRs. The reason why we do that, just to remind you, is that it's really hard to do an entire school at once. We would have to rent space for all of the stuff inside, the desks, the teachers' furnishings. So we will do the NPRs and the gyms and the stages in one year, and then use the rest of the school to store whatever's there. And then the next year, we'll just reverse it, and we use those areas to store the desks and their equipment. So it worked out great. Everybody was happy. The IEQ was wonderful. What was important about this one, too, is that when we first start this project, it can be a little stressful for the staff because I need to come talk to them about, you got to pack everything up in your own. The LMC director's really freaked out because he or she's got to pack up that whole library. They do it without complaint. And at the end of it, well, once they pack it up, then all of our staff, my Airmark staff, they take it and they store it. We take pictures of the rooms where their stuff was, and when we bring it back at the end of the project, they know right where it goes. Teachers come back, they unpack. They have brand-new floors with new baseboards. We paint every classroom. We paint the offices. We paint the hallways. We do that in-house as well. So a lot of work is done, more than just the contractor coming in and demolishing and putting a new floor in. We do a lot more work outside of that contract with our own staff, teachers, administrators, custodials, grounds, maintenance. And it just turns, when they come back, they have a brand-new room, and it's very heartening to me to watch them come in. We didn't do a lot of roofing projects this year. We have in the last couple, but we did do a roof at Owen, and we replaced the, some masonry issues at Steck, which sets us up to do Steck's roofs. Steck is the last building that has shingles on it. This was a shingled roof as well when it was first built 35 years ago, so now we got a standing C metal roof that should last 50 years, and that's kind of how we're going. So once we get funding for the Steck roof, we'll fit us that one. Cameras. We talked about this last year as a board, and we decided that we would install cameras at the other buildings that don't have them. So we had them at the three high schools and Burkett, and now we put them in every other building. So we've got the seven middle schools, the 21 elementary schools. We got this building. We did Shore Road. There's a server in each one of the middle schools, so that houses the server for the elementary schools. All in all, we installed 531 cameras, 1,260 odd views. That's because some of the cameras are two ways and some are four ways. Lots of views, inside and outside. We have every exterior door covered. We cover our new playgrounds and our old ones. We put motion sensor lights at our playgrounds and in the back by the dumpsters, so if somebody does come by and wants to do something, the light will come on, the camera will film them. We have stickers at the front door, letting everybody know that we have cameras in our buildings. We have big signs by our playgrounds, and it's a big smiley face, a yellow smiley face. It says, "Smile, you're on camera." Then we have another sign by the dumpsters that says, "This place is under video surveillance." And this kind of lets people know that we care. One of the things that was important to Matt and I was we're looking at funding this, is how can we keep the cost down? We had hired a low-voltage person through Airmark six months before this, and he and several of the maintenance guys were able to completely install this system, all the cabling and all the servers. And it saved us over $150,000. It was a big deal, and they got it done in the summer. They were done right before school starts. So we, hats off to that group. We're really proud of them. I'm sorry. This last slide for me, we're, you approved last year a chiller replacement at Niqua Valley. It's still going on. Reason being is that we are still in the cooling season, and I don't really want to take the chiller out. They may not be happy down there. So we have worked on getting the piping ready. We've got the pad board. We've got the fencing replaced. We had to redo some electrical work, and believe it or not, gas, because the one we're replacing is a gas chiller. As soon as the cooling season is over in four to eight weeks, we will shut down that chiller, and we have the new one ready to go, and we'll just pick and move and place and get it up and running by the start of the cooling season in the spring. We replaced, we're going to replace over 40 exterior doors. That sounds like a lot, but we probably have 800 of them. But some of them are getting rusted out, some of the ones in the back by where we bring the food in, where we bring supplies in. They get beat up over time because there's, you know, the jacks and all the equipment that goes through there. So it could be a safety and security issue, so we're replacing a lot of doors. We put a new shed at Granger. We replaced two fire alarms. I mentioned earlier at Peterson, and we've installed two pilot classrooms. We pretty much redid the classroom. If you had a chance to go look at it, please do. They're beautiful. But we're going to test out different furniture, different lighting, different ceiling tiles, different sound attenuation devices, and get an understanding of is it worth investing our money in a system like this? Does it help the kids? Does it calm them down? Do they learn better? Do they collaborate more? We'll have more information for you in the months to come. We're also doing a pilot LMC at Georgetown, similar thing. And lastly, we refinished the upper gym at Hill, and it looks beautiful.
All right. And so, again, it's been all of two weeks since we've completed that work in summer 2024, but moving forward, we do want to present to the board our initial plan for the summer of 2025. So as you know, and as mentioned earlier, we do have a referendum on the ballot here in November, our Safer Stronger 204 proposal. And so first, I'll start with showing what summer 2025, what our proposal would be if that referendum is approved by our voters in November. I have some of the discussion points here organized along five categories. These were the categories that we use to kind of form our master facility plan, too. So these were the five highest priority areas kind of identified as part of our master facility plan process that was adopted by the board last December. I will also just point out that we haven't incurred any costs yet on referendum-funded projects. And so a lot of this work, again, we would not start, be planning or design work until the referendum is approved. But what that does mean is that some of the larger projects, realistically, it's going to be summer of 2026, when we really have an opportunity to really start the first phase of significant work. It takes anywhere from nine to 12 months to really go through the design process with the architects, to put our team in place, to start bidding projects, and also just get a better handle of the timeline and scopes, work with our buildings to really understand what some of these large projects we're envisioning means for the day-to-day operations while those projects are underway. So with that said, I'll just kind of go through what we have envisioned for summer of 2025. And this is, again, a kind of a lot of smaller projects, a lot of work that we are confident we could get up and running here if the referendum is successful in November. I will start with safety and security. As the board knows, this is the highest priority in our referendum proposal, and we would estimate our proposing spending about $10 million next summer exclusively on safety and security items. That includes starting our Secure Vestibule Project at all of our schools. That includes accelerating the exterior door replacement projects that John mentioned we started this summer. And along with exterior doors, we also improve access controls or locking mechanisms when we do that work, too. So that's converting locks, for example, from just a key lock, a traditional lock-and-key, to more access control-based, digital-based, so that we can, we have better control over when and how those facilities are accessed based on using those electronic card readers. Moving on to infrastructure, we would propose spending about $8.8 million on infrastructure projects. I would say the largest of that expenditure is really in that flooring replacement area. So as JR mentioned, we're about halfway through our projects with our elementary schools after the second summer. We feel we have a really good handle on these projects, and this would be the summer where we really can scale up and really address the remaining schools. So either, as JR mentioned, we try and use two summers for each school, so every school would see either their full, the full school, except the gym or the LMC be addressed, or have the gym and LMC addressed for flooring. And this would put us on schedule by summer of 2026 then to have replaced flooring in all of our elementary schools. Also including the infrastructure is to continue working on asphalt and paving improvements. Niqua Valley, we've spent the last two summers doing two of their lots and their front drive. This would be the chance to kind of finish the work at Niqua, as well as address a few other schools as well. And then we do have some money there for the roof replacement work that JR mentioned with Steck Elementary being the most likely school for that project. Learning environments was the third category, and we're allocating about $1.7 million for learning environment-specific projects. That includes the playground projects, again, adding four more new, four more elementary playgrounds to our, to the work. We've already done 13 new elementary school playgrounds in the last two years, so this would, similar to the flooring, put us in a position to have renovated and replaced all elementary school playgrounds by 2026. The fourth area in the master facility plan was really addressing that lack of parity, and that's where we talked about needing significant improvements at Yambonzi Valley, Hill, and Gregory. As mentioned, these projects are really the largest components of that master facility plan, and so we're really targeting summer of 2026 for the construction on those projects to really start in earnest. However, we will be able to begin design work on those projects as soon as November. And so we will start working on that, those plans for all three of those schools in November. We do have $5 million set aside for, it's what we're calling Phase 1 work at Yambonzi Valley. We do believe the auditorium is a good area to start in the building. It's kind of independent from the rest of the building. It's very old and outdated. The seats and other elements of that auditorium are over 30 years old. And again, that can be a standalone project. We can get up and running pretty quickly if the referendum is successful. Again, also tying back to our building rental discussion earlier, that's an area that's rented a lot, that's used by our community, that many of our community members are in, whether it's a school program or a community program. So again, trying to maximize the impact of some of these early dollars in how we're really using our facilities, not just for our school community, but for the broader community as well. And then the final piece that I'll talk about is just identifying some areas where we can really start getting more efficient on the operation side. And so a lot of these kind of carry over to other topics we already talked about, but we would like to start working on an LED lighting replacement for the whole district. So right now, we have about three rooms, I think, in the whole district that have LED lightings, the two pilot classrooms we mentioned earlier, and I think we have one office in the CEC where we've kind of tried it out. But the truth is, the, you know, we believe we can cut our electric costs by over $1 million each year through LED replacement. We also believe, you know, this provides a better learning environment for our students as well. So again, we're showing it here as a goal about efficiency, but also directly relates to that learning but also directly relates to that learning environment need as well. LED also enhances security, again, better, better lighting of our parking lots, a lot of our exterior, exterior areas as well. And then finally, some of the HVAC and chiller work that, that JR mentioned earlier also has an efficiency component to it. You know, the, the chiller specifically at Niqua that we're looking at replacing, John mentioned it, but, but I'll emphasize, that's a gas-powered chiller. It's, it's one large unit right now. We're looking at replacing that with three smaller electric units. So that you, you're really only needing to use the system at its full capacity during the hottest days of the year. But for, for most of the time, for most of the time when the air conditioning is on, we're able to scale that down and only use one of three chillers. Again, saving, saving, you know, up to half of the costs associated with operating that chiller on a, on a daily, on a daily basis. So that was our plan. If, if the referendum proposal is approved by our voters, we do have a plan if that, if that referendum is not successful. And it is a much smaller dollar amount. It would be to spend about ten million dollars this summer, so that is lower than we've spent the last three summers. And obviously, the focus changes to, to, to really, to really only the highest priority projects. So we still would do some safety and security with a focus on the, the exterior doors and access controls, but we would not be able to start those, the secure vestibule work. We would also scale down the work we're doing with flooring replacement and with asphalt and paving improvements. We would go down an elementary playground, so we'd go from four to three. And then again, we would, we would do some of the HVAC and chiller work we, we just discussed, but there wouldn't be the funds necessarily available to, to start that LED lighting work. I will point out that this ten million dollars, that really would be the last of our capital projects fund. And so this would really be the last summer where we have a, a specific restricted source for capital projects. After this summer, any sort of projects we would do after the ten million listed here would have to be funded with operating funds. So with that, I'll just, our next step after, after the meeting, if, if this plan looks, looks good to the board, at least at a high level, we would start working on the ten million dollars worth of work that we're proposing regardless of the referendum going forward. We will continue to, to inform the community about our Safer Stronger 204 proposal. And then if the referendum is successful on November sixth, things would get pretty busy for us. We would start putting our team together and, and working to, to, to kind of accelerate that thirty million dollars worth of work for next summer, as well as again, start the, the long-range planning for some of the larger projects we expect to start in summer of twenty twenty-six. And so with that, John and I are available for any questions.
All right, we're happy tonight to have our student advisory board here. And I'll, I'll open it up to Soraya, if you have any questions at this time.
If you wish, I mean, I don't want to press.
You're good.
It's too late.
As a student advisory board, we discussed all this beforehand, watched the presentation. We didn't seem to have any more questions, just based on everything that already happened. Do you guys have any questions for us?
Maybe you can just say a few words about the board, like how many members there are, and how many, you're representing each of the schools.
So, right now, I represent, I'm the executive board member from Tia Valley High School, and we have six members from Matia. Right now, we also have Soheil Fong and Dia Menon, and they are the executive members of Wabonzi and Niqua. So in total, we're probably around the twenty to twenty-five students representing us. And some of the work that we're planning to do, of course, we'll discuss that in more depth in future meetings. But at Matia, we're looking at reducing vaping and looking at recycling initiatives, looking at academic integrity, as well as also seeing if there is any other ways we can increase academic development. So those are some of the things at a high level of what we're working on. Other than that, we're looking forward to working with you for the rest of the year.
Right, and we're, we're thrilled to have you. Having the student voice in our deliberations and our discussions and our thoughts is extremely important to the board. So we're extremely happy to have all of you here, and welcome your input and your questions and your knowledge.
Thank you.
So thank you.
We're excited to be here.
Thank you. All right, Ms. Jane.
Thank you again for today's presentation. I really think, just through your comments, many of my questions were already addressed. But just to reiterate, for those who may be seeing some of these numbers or hearing this information for the first time, Mr. Shipley, at the end of your remarks, you had mentioned we had funds set aside for the last few summers, which will no longer be available moving forward. Can you just speak to that a little bit more, and as to why that's the case?
Sure, so in the state of Illinois, there's no recurring continual source of funding for capital needs. So as a, as a district, with, with over four million square feet of buildings, we do have, you know, at least ten million, but, but realistically, more than that, and recurring needs that, that occur every year. So our, our choices for funding that is really to, to take money from, from other operating sources, or, or fund it through, through referendums, which is not uncommon in Illinois. And we are, as mentioned, we do have a referendum proposal on the ballot for this November. Or to, to spend one-time funds for that. And so, right now, over the last three or four summers, we have, we have made a commitment to really increase our capital funding. We did that primarily through spending non-recurring funds. There was some reserves that it, that it accumulated over several years that we spent. There was some money from, from some land sales and some other one-time transactions that we've spent. But again, we're down, we're down to about ten to thirteen million dollars left of those funds after this summer's work. And so we really have about one more summer worth, worth of work for those funds. And so that's why we believed and, and why we came to the board in August with, with the referendum proposal, because we, we do believe we have significant needs well above and beyond what, what we have either in current reserves or, or the ability to fund with, with operations.
Thank you, thank you for that explanation. You know, everything is laid out so wonderfully here in terms of explaining what our needs are and how we're utilizing our funds. I, I'll go to slide ten, because I had the opportunity to visit those pilot classrooms. And it, it was pretty exciting to see new furniture and just a new way of looking at a learning environment, to see what's possible and to see what's kind of out there these days. And these students were so thrilled by experimenting, and they seemed engaged and excited and gave wonderful feedback on what's good and what's not. And I also recognized the lighting and how much of a difference that made. So, it's, it, it may seem small and may, may seem insignificant at some level to some, but it, it actually makes a difference. So I, I appreciated that experience. And I also, Mr. Robinson, I, I appreciate your comments about the preparation that happens before the contractors come in and afterwards. I think we forget, unless we are disturbed by, by something, like if something interferes with our day-to-day, only then do we acknowledge what's happening. But it's been happening so smoothly because of the work that you all have been doing. It's, it's remarkable that it happened in budget and, in time. Really, really a testament to you and your team, and the work from all the staff and cooperation from everybody. So thank you.
Mr. Karubas.
I'm gonna say, everything similar to what Supna said, but just use different words. On page four, you mentioned that all projects were performed on time and on budget. But I think the important part on there is, is left off, is with, and minimal disruption to the instructional environment. And you, you mentioned it, we did it during the summer. But that, you know, the flip side is, we didn't impact the classroom. And so I think that is what really hits home, is that, look, we, we did all these things, and we did it without, you know, in, going into the classroom and having to do it when the kids were there, when the staff was there. So that, that's a huge win that I, I think we need to highlight and talk about more. And then, you know, we talked about how, what it takes to get this done, and we're kind of forced to do it from an efficiency standpoint. But, you know, you've got to bid these contracts early, you know, in the, in the fall before the year, so that people can be running and start after graduation. So, there's, there is a huge ramp to get this done. And with the manpower we have doing that, you know, kudos to, to you and the, the staff on, on, on making that happen. I imagine if the referendum passes, you might need some more assistance in that department in order to manage, manage that budget. And then to flush out the operating budget, oftentimes when we get into our, our expertise, we throw around terms that not everybody's familiar with. So, talk, give me, explain it to me like I'm a fifth grader. What is included in the operating budget? What are some of the expenditures included in the operating budget?
Sure. So our, as a district, we have an operating budget, and then we have a non-operating budget. Our operating budget is, is generally made of recurring revenues and recurring expenditures. And I think they're the expenditures you, you see in, in, in a daily basis in our schools. So the largest portion of that, about seventy-six percent, is salaries and benefits. Salaries for our teaching staff, our support staff, our building leaders, our administration here at the district office, really, and anybody. We, we employ about thirty-two hundred individuals, and that's all funded out of our operating budget. Operating budget also includes our day-to-day building operations needs. It includes our student transportation services. And it, it just includes other costs that, that support the district on, on a daily basis. When we get to the non-operating side, that's when we're talking about items that maybe aren't, aren't recurring. So that's a debt service payment, so payments on, on bonds and, and that have been issued by the district. And then what we spent, the bulk of this evening talking about is our non-operating capital budget. So these are, these are capital projects, one-time expenditures to, to really improve our facilities and improve our learning environments. And generally speaking, they're, they're funded with, with one-time revenues, as we mentioned earlier. We do not have a recurring source of revenues to, to fund these projects.
So, if the referendum passes, we're going to be in a position where we hope to spend forty million on capital improvements, which would be part of our non-operating expenses, right?
That's correct. All the, all the referendum dollars, again, this is a building referendum, all, all the referendum funds would be non-operating capital funds. They would be spent out of a non-operating capital projects fund.
And then if the referendum doesn't pass, on slide twelve, we're going to spend, we're proposing to spend ten million on capital projects, because that's the bare minimum to keep the system running. You gotta, gotta patch roofs, you gotta, you know, put duct tape on boilers and chillers and things.
We would, our, our duct tape expenditure would go up, yes. Yes, that's, that's the plan. I mean, I will, I will point out, we're, we're showing just the summer of twenty twenty-five this evening. So if the referendum's successful, we would have forty million available next summer. And then we would have the remaining referendum dollars available for the next several summers. So you would, you could expect to see somewhere around forty million dollars in capital spend over, over much of the next decade. Whereas if the referendum's not successful, we go down to ten million for next summer. That would also be the last of our capital funds, and we would be evaluating other ways to fund the bare minimum of capital expenditures going forward.
And that evaluation would include potentially spending ten million dollars from our operating funds in order to cover the capital outlays?
That, that's correct.
And so we might be spending ten million dollars that would have gone to staff, salaries, transportation, food service, custodial staff, and spend that on capital outlays?
That's correct.
And that's the bare minimum that we need to spend on capital outlays. We would like to spend forty million dollars so we can make some capital improvements on LEDs and security, right?
That's correct.
Thank you, no questions.
Ms. Gens.
I just want to thank you guys for this very comprehensive presentation and everything you have already done. I think we can all agree, it's been very exciting the last couple summers, driving around, seeing everything, you know, being replaced. I do appreciate the comments by both Justin and Supna, just making sure everyone does really fully comprehend, you know, how much needs to get done. And I do have to agree with Supna, that pilot classroom is really cool. If you guys have not been there, you should go. And it is exciting to see these kids really engaged, and I think they feel like they have a part in their education in a way not a lot of students get to. So, I'm not going to find a third different way to say everything they have both already said. So, I'm just ending it with, thank you very much, and I very much look forward to everything we'll be doing in the future.
All right, so I was sitting here checking off the points I wanted to make, that were covered by everyone already. But I, I will say a couple of things about cost savings, because you, during the presentation, you highlighted like the camera installation that you saw, found a very efficient way of getting those installed and the cables run and things. But also, the changes in flooring is also a savings, right? Because it's improved maintenance, easier to clean, and that you, in some cases, were replacing thirty-year-old carpeting in schools, which is like unbelievably icky to think about what was on that carpeting. But isn't that correct?
Yeah, and, you know, custodians' life in the summer, they typically spend of their ten weeks, six weeks moving furniture, stripping and waxing floors, or shampooing and drying carpets, moving furniture back, doing the same thing in the hallways. They spend six weeks doing that. These new floors, it's a wet mop, takes a couple days, they're done. Now you have three people in an elementary school with six weeks on their hands. What can they do? Amazing things. You go to the schools now, they're as clean as they've ever been. Ceiling tiles can be changed out. We can get them outside and do grounds work. Paint, we're painting everything. Paint is cheap, we do it ourselves, it looks beautiful if you've been to the buildings. People are happy.
Yeah, I mean, also, yeah, looking forward on the LED is also a, a source of a savings. So I appreciate that that is always in our minds, that we're looking not only to upgrade things and to change out old things, but also how to improve the cost or the efficiency or the expense associated with having certain products. So I think that's important. Also, I just really want to echo the thanks. I'm professionally certified as a project manager, and so I look at this list of stuff that gets done during the summer, and this was a big list this summer. And I know it's complicated to keep all those moving parts going and getting all this done again without disrupting classrooms and things. So, truly appreciate that and realize how much effort and work that is to make that happen and run smoothly. So thank you so much. Did you have something? Yeah.
I'm going to put somebody on the spot by what I'm about to say next. She happens to be in the audience, and she's one of our principals. And so, and the reason I'm putting her on the spot is because her building has a new playground and new flooring. And so here's what I want to say, so you have a moment to think about what I wanted for your response. Our, these new playgrounds are really community playgrounds, we have to remember this. Yes, we are changing these playgrounds for the students at the school, but we are also changing them for our community. And I believe, and she can correct me if I'm wrong, that the community was biting at the bit to get on that playground when it was finished. I also want to believe, and I, in, in visiting the schools that have had the new floors, the environment in the building is completely changed. There is so much research about how the proper environment in a school means children will learn. If it's a rundown building, children are not learning, because they don't, they don't take ownership and pride in their, in their school. And so it is almost like they've come back to a new building with the new flooring that is there. Brighter. Brighter, it looks larger, it looks larger. It isn't, but it looks larger. And so those are the comments that I've heard when I have visited the schools. Keely, I don't know if you want to add anything to what I said there?
Of course I do. I couldn't agree more, Dr. Tally. I think that one of the things about the capital projects that we were so fortunate to see was just that everything speaks. And like you said, the aesthetics do matter. It matters what the learning environment is around us. It makes kids excited and proud of their school. When I say everything speaks, it means we all take pride in our surroundings and our learning. And at the end of the day, you're probably like, it's paint, it's flooring, it's a playground. It's not. It is our school, it is something we're proud of. You're right, that very first day, we actually couldn't keep kids off of the playground. We had people over the summer from our community asking, when are you going to take those barriers down? Colleen, John Robinson, asking, when are those coming down? We want to get on the playground. And so it really, you know, seeing students and play, that is part of their day at the elementary level, and it is so incredibly important. The flooring, people walk into our building all the time and are constantly like, your school is so warm and welcoming, it is beautiful. And kids are so proud of it as well. We've even had a new cleaning staff, our robot. So part of the floors is they are trying out some new robots to help take up some of the cleaning that some of our custodians would have to do. And you might be wondering when John Robinson mentioned about the six weeks that custodians then have of the summer. People ask me all the time, what do you do over the summer? There is a ton of work that goes into preparing those buildings. And our custodial staff is hard at work from the minute they walk in to the minute they leave. And I collaborated a ton with our staff this year after having the flooring from last summer. There's still so much to be done. But the work that they can then invest their time in is so much meaning, more meaningful and connected to our learning of our students. So I can't speak more about the capital projects and the work that it's done and the impact that it's had on learning for our students.
Thank you, and then thank you so much. And the last thing I want to bring up is what was mentioned. We've done paving and new front entrance, not, they haven't done front entrances to the building, but we've done the cement and everything for the buildings. Our schools, our community schools, how they look on the outside impacts the community. It impacts property values, everything that's related to that. Rundown schools mean property values are decreasing. And that's why schools are always looking at how to improve the curb appeal, something a former superintendent I've worked for would always look at. What is the curb appeal of a building? And that is important for the community in which the school is found.
So thank you very much, both of you. All right, now we have legislative advocacy and Board of Education update. Are there any updates or comments?
We will be going to Springfield for the third time, or at least our third version of the mental health presentation that we will be presenting to the superintendents of Illinois end of this month. And so we, what's unique about this presentation, with every presentation, there's been a new iterate, with a new iteration of this presentation is that we've now collaborated with District 45, which is a smaller district than 204, but they have found a way to take our model and adapt it to their size and their needs. And so in this presentation, we hope to inspire other superintendents to look at it and see what's possible for their district. So we're looking forward to that presentation end of this month.
There also is a Lenn meeting on, I believe it's this Friday, and it's with legislators, local legislators. So it's an important opportunity for the board and administration to speak with the surrounding people who are looking at how it ways to improve our schools and make us a better and, better and more well-funded place, hopefully. So I'm looking forward to that. So with that, I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Any opposed? Okay, we are adjourned.